Monthly meeting is only implied for the year to one. Heidi, please call the board.
Yes, Ellen Cornell?
Present.
Thomas Callahan?
Here.
Pete Kyle?
Here.
Christopher Allman?
Here.
Joseph Paglia?
Here.
Anthony Bernetti?
Here.
James Manning?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a full board.
Thank you, Heidi. This evening, we've got a few changes to our agenda. The first being D Simone. That will not be heard this evening. We're going to move that to a date certain of June 26th that's coming one day. So, Chair, would entertain a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries seven zero. Chris, do you want? Steve usually has us. Can we put the appeals of the building official? Bundle them together or?
Yes, for the purposes of continuing, yes.
Okay. So, BTRI Secana Boulevard Investments, Nine Exeter LLC, Eastside LLC, Reynoldi and Mida will not be heard this evening. They're moving to a date certain of July 26th. Chair, would entertain a motion?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries seven zero. So if you are here for any of those hearings, we will not be hearing them this evening. So we have the approval of the meeting minutes of April 20th, 2023. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, we will accept the place on file in minutes from April 20, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I abstained. That was a new.
That motion carries six zero.
I abstained as well.
Oh, sorry. Five zero was two percent.
I'm not here either. I should be getting that motion. It's a two-on-one motion.
Okay. Tony was not here when I'm here, so.
He was not.
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries four zero.
Three. Four zero three.
Yes, one zero three. All right. So first item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's Gould Flat NG Lot 685 located at Forty Old Pine Road.
Good evening. My name is David Gould, Forty Old Pine.
Mr. Gould, are you an attorney by any chance?
No.
All right. Could you please raise your hand?
How?
You'd be sworn.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you guys? Please state your name and spell your last.
David Gould, G-O-U-L-D.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gould. You have the floor.
Thank you. I am here this evening seeking a setback variance to build a deck on back of my home. This house is currently under construction following a fire last April requiring a complete rebuild on the existing foundation. We have made some upgrades in our planning but keeping the same footprint that the previous dwelling occupied.
Mr. Gould?
Yes?
Could you just go a little bit slower?
Sure.
That's all.
Sure. You want me to start running?
No.
No.
What brings me before you this evening is a proposed deck on the southwest corner of the house which would exceed the setback by 7.2 feet. The deck only exceeds the setback on the western corner of the deck, not the entire length, due to the characteristics of the property which tapers down as you follow it to the west. Which, you know, makes it harder to meet the setback farther west you go. We had considered putting a deck on the west side above the garage, but it became clear after realizing the flow from the kitchen slash dining area to a slider on that side would be extremely awkward, seeking this variance to maintain a similar quality of light that we enjoyed in our previous dwelling.
You said the backside of the house is, that won't work?
Well, that is.
That's your parking?
It is the backside of the house. So this is.
Side of the house, I get it.
Right. So this is.
Mr. Gould, if you'd like.
This is the back of the house. This would be, this is the side where the big parking area, gravel parking area. And then it would be a slider coming out this way. Had we put it over here, this is an open space here, you know, kitchen, living rooms, dining area. And if you had a dining table here, I mean, going from the kitchen, you'd have to scoot around the dining table to get out to the slider here to the deck where, you know, tables, chairs, grill, et cetera would be. It's just made a lot more sense to put it here.
Do you want me to put up the floor plan?
Sure.
Do we have the floor plan?
If you haven't one, then it's great.
Oh, we don't? I'm sorry. My fault.
Not one of the packets.
Mr. Gould, that of Butts Thornapple Road, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So there's no, you're not encroaching on the house. You're just coming closer to the street than.
Correct.
Certainly an odd shape of lot.
Yeah. Did the fire destroy what portion of the house or the entire house?
The entire house, down to the foundation.
So that deck on the other side did not exist previously either?
It did. It was much, it was quite a bit bigger. That was, kind of flopped where the living area was. So down, it was in a raised range prior, and now it's basically the same house with another floor on top. But, so basically this deck was over here, and, but this is just a, like a master bedroom which will probably, which our plan is to, when we're elderly or a marshal. Kind of quite come to grips with that yet. So, you know, we would have less stairs to travel up and down, so we would have our master bedroom here. It was just a small deck here without any egress or ingress from the deck. It just hangs over the yard. It's a small, can't go heavy, kind of thing. So it was here because the kitchen was here. The kitchen was here, dining area, living area. So now that's over here. So this has to take that deck.
Did the prior, do you happen to know, did the prior deck encroach on the setback?
No.
Did not?
But again, because of this, the unique.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah.
Right. There was more setback to.
I mean, obviously, this is, the dimensions on the lot, it's only 87 feet in depth at its widest most. So, I don't see it as an unreasonable request at all.
I don't either, especially given that the house is being built on the same footprint that was there before.
Are there any further questions of Mr. Gould?
Nope.
No. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone who is opposed that would like to speak? Chair, would entertain a motion that we close this public hearing?
Sure.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries five zero. In regards to Gould, what's the board's pleasure?
Chairman, with respect to project summary, Gould Tax Assessor Flat NG Lot 685, I would have to adopt the following as findings of fact. The applicant and owner of the property, David Gould, testified in favor of the application and informed the board that there had been a structural total loss fire of his existing home and that he has, he's in the process of reconstructing the home, basically on the same footprint with some minor changes, I suppose, to the first floor interior of the property. The lot itself is an irregularly shaped lot which is wide, I think, at the eastern end and then narrows down as it goes towards the west, leaving a very narrow footprint overall, which makes it a very unique situation. The applicant is seeking relief, basically 7.2 feet from the rear yard. Setback requirements, there were no, nobody testified other than Mr. Gould in favor of his application, and no one testified against it. The only encroachment of this setback variance, if granted, is going to be on a road. There's no, there's no other home that is going to be affected. Those will be my findings of fact. I'll second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded to enter the plaintiff's effect into the record. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries five zero.
In regards to project summary, Gould Tax Assessor Flat NG Lot 685, based upon the testimony of Mr. Gould, the documents that he provided as part of his application, I would move that the board grant the dimensional variance from section 6.4 for a 7.2 rear yard setback. I believe that the testimony adduced at this hearing from Mr. Gould showed that this is a unique piece of property, that the hardship to not granting this does not result from any prior action of the applicant, that the variance will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, and that the relief being sought is the least relief necessary given the peculiar geography of the subject lot. And I'd move that the board grant the variance as sought. Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded to grant the relief requested.
There are three conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gould, you see those conditions? You okay with them? You're on page two.
I apologize. I don't have that paper looking.
We'll never get a better deal than that.
All right. So I'll incorporate into my motion that the applicant has indicated that he finds all of the conditions one through three on page two of the project summary as acceptable and I'll incorporate it into the motion.
I'll amend my second accordingly.
Okay. Motion has been, again, properly made and seconded to grant the relief requested with conditions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries five zero. Good luck, Mr. Gould.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Richards Tax Assessor Flat A, lots 114 and 115 located
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Matthew Wayne during behalf of the applicants, Stephen and Nancy Richards, who are in attendance here this evening, joined by Karen Beck from Principia Engineering.
From where?
I'm sorry.
From where?
Principia Engineering. I'll be asking her a few questions in regard to this application, but I just kind of want to provide a brief overview of how we've gotten here. It's the culmination of about a year and a half worth of engineering and discussions with the town. It's a little bit of a unique application that I don't think the board sees that often since it involves a paper street. So I just want to provide a little bit of context as we proceed. This involves lots A 114 and A 115. The proposal contemplates an administrative subdivision or merger of those two lots into a single lot for the construction of a single-family residence, four bedrooms, approximately 3,200 square feet in size. These are lawful pre-existing lots of record along Marble Road, which I said is a private paper street. The Richards do own two additional lots just to the, I think that's the west, or excuse me, the east. Those lots, as you'll hear, are covered in wetlands. They're undevelopable. There's no intent to develop those. They're also not part of this application. I just wanted to indicate that for the record. There are different, different ownerships as well, but there is no intent or plan to develop those lots and could not because of environmental reasons. The request for relief before you is strictly of road frontage variance. There's a provision in your ordinance that requires, before you get a building permit, that a lot has legal frontage on a lot that's improved to town standards. And I don't want to get into too much of the legal background about paper streets and how they come about, but essentially, this entire plat was recorded in the land evidence records, and it showed these lots that have, some of which have been developed, or most I should say, except for this cluster of lots, primarily because of environmental reasons. Star Drive is an accepted public street that runs from north to south, provides frontage for pretty much all the lots in this area. And Marble Road that you see here was never improved, even though it's on a recorded plat. But the legal right to improve and develop that paper street lies with those who have an interest in it on the plat. Mr. Richards, with a legal platted grandfathered lot, if you will, has a right to develop his lot, and he's landlocked at the moment and has a platted street on record, but needs access to his lot through a series of permitting applications, both locally and with the state. But the, really, very, very minimal amount of relief that we're asking from the town, even though there's a lot of other stuff going on with wetlands and state permitting, it's really just to be relieved from the frontage requirement of your ordinance that requires us to be improved to town standards. And I can tell you, there's been a number of conversations well before I got involved with Principia's office, the engineer at the time, Josh Frozen, was working on it. Tom Principia and Karen had been working on it. Subsequently, there were discussions with the town as to what standard this did have to be improved to. Your subdivision regulations require 18 feet in width. That was explored. That was attempted to be designed. And because of all the wetland concerns, disturbance of this area, and a requirement that CRMC requires applicants to minimize to the greatest extent possible any disturbance to wetlands, making this any wider, as you'll hear, would have created greater disturbance to those wetlands. So the design was intentional, and over a year ago was in agreement with the town in DPW at the time that 16 feet would be acceptable. The initial application had 166-foot roadway, I believe, in length that triggered turnaround requirements for fire apparatus, as I'm sure you're all familiar with. Again, subsequent discussions with the town over the course of a year, it came to our attention that the town would not allow this road, or DPW would not allow this to be a town road unless it was at 18 feet. So we were sort of faced with, well, can this be public or private? We can't go to 18 feet because of the environmental concerns. We want to keep it at 16 feet. We reduce the road to 150 feet so we don't have to have the turnaround and don't trigger all those other requirements with fire apparatus, even though there is a fire driveway turnaround there. So the road before you is proposed to be private. We were trying to develop it to town standards, tried to dedicate it back to the public, to the town, but there was a change of heart, if you will. There was a new, you know, new regime. There's a lot of different input over the years, and we were told it would not be accepted at 16 feet. So we reverted to the same design at 16 feet, but we're going to keep it private. And one of the conditions we certainly would agree to and acknowledge is that maintenance will be assumed by Mr. Richards, and an operations and maintenance plan will be submitted and conditioned upon any approval if this board chooses to do so. So it'll remain private, but it's consistent with anyone that has a right in a paper street, whether that's the abutting neighbors or anyone else on the plat. I want to get into that. That's for another day. We're not restricting access to anybody that wants to access it. We understand that other people may have a right in this paper street. We're exercising the right to develop it, put a driveway there to access our lot. It's for one house, for one family. There's no other lots intended for development. And so that's kind of what we're dealing with. But to the extent we are looking at wetlands and the issues there, it's in relation and in the context of the hardships that are presented here, obvious hardships, I would say. As we all know, CRMC and BEM will be vetting this heavily, and it's subject to their jurisdiction. So we're aware that there's a lot going on with the wetlands. We're working with CRMC. We're aware of all that. We have to get permit by them. So this is really just with regard to the road frontage issue that I mentioned. So, probably spoken a little too, too long, or longer than I had intended. I'd like to introduce Karen Beck from Principia and ask that she be sworn in. I have a few questions I may.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you guys?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Karen Beck. Last name is B as in boy, E as in Edward, C as in Charles, K as in Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Could you please just tell the board what your current place and appointment is?
Principia Engineering, which is located in Turriton, Rhode Island.
And what's your current role or occupation?
I'm a registered landscape architect. I've been with Principia Engineering for approximately two years. Prior to that, I was with Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Inc. for 33 and a half years. During that timeframe, almost 40 years, my responsibilities have not only been associated with landscape architecture, but also with permitting. So whether it's a state project or a residential project or subdivision, anything from small to very, very large, commercial, et cetera, I've done the design for the drainage because of the fact that I can make sure that it meets all of the permitting requirements as well as being aesthetically pleasing and meeting all of the stormwater requirements, et cetera, for both local and state agencies.
So, Ms. Beck, you have, is it your testimony of approximately 40 years of experience in site plan preparation?
I do.
Experience with drainage plans?
I do.
Experience with landscape plans?
I do.
Do you have a working knowledge of requirements of the town and area answer for this type of project?
I do.
Do you, are you familiar with the regulations of CRMC?
Yes.
Were you part of the project team that put these site plans together?
Yes.
Have you testified in front of any boards or municipalities before?
Yes, including Superior Court, all sorts of state and town boards in both Rhode Island and Massachusetts and Connecticut.
Have you testified in front of this board, seriously?
I believe so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Ms. Beck be qualified as a witness. This is not an injection.
For the purposes of this public hearing, Ms. Beck will be considered an expert in the field of landscape architecture?
In site plan.
And site plan development.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Beck, you're obviously familiar with the property in question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us approximately how large this property is?
There are two lots totaling approximately 32, 36, 36,000 square feet, something along that line.
Okay. And the intent is to combine the two lots into a single lot?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know approximately how large the proposed home is going to be?
It's approximately 3,000 square feet, includes deck and garage and screen porch, et cetera.
Okay. Do you know approximately how many bedrooms?
Four.
Is the intent for Stephen and Nancy Richards to reside in this dwelling? Ms. Beck, are there certain unique characteristics about this development project?
Absolutely. If I may, I'd like to be able to hand out, I know you've got this in front of you, but I took the liberty of coloring up the plan to just make it a little bit more clear what it is that we're dealing with here. Is this any exhibit?
Are we submitting one of these?
Sure. It's the, it's the same plan that was submitted to you previously. It's just colored.
Yeah, the document that Ms. Beck is handing out last time to be marked as exhibit one or exhibit A. And I'll just ask Ms. Beck to explain that exhibit to the board for the record.
Basically, it's just sheet two of five, the proposed condition plan, which has been submitted to you previously. The latest revision date is January 10th of 2023. And all I have done with the submission in front of you is to color certain of the lines in order to make them a little bit more clear. So in this particular instance, the yellow line is basically highlighting the property. As you can see, I'm highlighting all four of the lots that are owned by the Richards. The only two lots that are currently in front of you are Lot 114, which is immediately behind existing dwelling number 39 on Star Drive, and then Lot 115, which is immediately behind Lot 114. Marble Road is to the south of those lots, and the blue line is the wetland edge. What's unique about this particular location is the fact that the wetland is basically kind of a finger of wetland that exists predominantly, almost exclusively, in this particular immediate location within the Marble Road right of way. The wetland does not encroach onto Lot 114, which is where we're proposing to do the construction. All of the wetlands are within the town right of way. The wetland then does expand north and south into Lot 115 and 116 and 117, and then some of the other lots that are south of Marble Road. But the proposal that we have in front of you, and what you'll see, the red line, is basically our limit of disturbance. And what we need to do, unfortunately, because Marble Road, despite the fact that it hasn't been improved, is the only viable access. been improved, is the only viable access to this particular lot. And in order to access our lot from Star Drive through the Marble Road right-of-way, unfortunately, wetlands have to be impacted. The regulations, according to CRMC, require, because of where it's located, that we replicate wetlands, if we disturb them, to one and a half times. So, basically, any square footage of wetland within the Marble Road right-of-way that we have to impact in order to provide access to this particular lot, we then have to replicate. So, what we're proposing to do is a multiple of things. We have to replicate the wetland, we have to meet the town standards in terms of stormwater control, so any impervious surface areas that we propose for the house or the driveway, or even for Marble Road itself, we have to treat for stormwater purposes. We have standards that we have to meet in terms of how those are designed and how they function. So, in this particular instance, what we're proposing to do is to create a wetland replication area to one and a half times the amount of impact that we're doing within the Marble Road, and we're doing it in the immediate vicinity of that wetland impact. Those are some of the additional requirements from CRMC. It has to be an immediate area, it has to have one and a half times, it has to have the same volume, it has to basically function as if it were the previous wetland in a slightly different location. And in this particular instance, because of the way the wetland is located in the right-of-way, we're actually having to replicate the wetland on the private property of the Richards. But still, it's immediately adjacent to the area that's being impacted, it's got the volume that's required, all of the criteria for that wetland replication are being met by this. In addition, as I mentioned, we have to meet the water quality standards that are required by both CRMC and the town of Narragansett. In this particular instance, we're creating two bio-retention areas, which you're probably getting very familiar with in the town, because they're becoming more and more common. So, all of the driveway and the house will be treated by one of the, there's bio-retention one, which is to the east, and then there's bio-retention two, which is to the west along the property line. And then, in addition, because we're also providing, proposing additional impervious area because of the Marble Road creation, we are proposing a wet swale that will treat the water quality for Marble Road. There were concerns with the town in terms of the amount of flow that was going to come off of Marble Road, so we're actually proposing two trench drains within the Marble Road roadway to make sure that any water that's flowing in this direction, down slope, which is the normal flow here towards Star Drive, there are two trench drains that will pick up any surface flow that comes down Marble Drive and will be, make sure that it goes into the proposed wet swale. So, again, we're meeting the standards for both the CRMC state standards for stormwater, as well as for the town regulations. Part of the reason why we reduced the width of the roadway from 18 to 16 is to make sure we had enough room to treat the stormwater per the town's regulations and the state regulations. So, again, we've, we've done everything we can to make sure that we're meeting all of the standards that we possibly can. So, in this particular instance, I think, given the constraints on this site, we, we met a lot of people, talked to a lot of town personnel to try to make sure that this was going to be as palatable as possible to the neighbors, to the town, et cetera, while providing what we need to provide for the Richards for their long-term enjoyment of their existing lot.
Ms. Beck, just a few follow-up questions. All the system designs, all the features that you have just discussed are subject to state regulatory authorities, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that'll be heavily vetted and reviewed, correct?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Ms. Beck, I think you testified in regards to the need to reduce the width of the road for these swales, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Were environmental impacts also part of your reasoning for reducing the road?
Absolutely. If we had increased the width of the roadway, an additional two feet for that 150-foot length, we would have to treat that additional stormwater area, and that would also increase the width of disturbance that we have to have in this particular area. So, more wetland disturbance, more stormwater treatment, there's a lot of stuff being put into a relatively small area, given the fact that the town's right-of-way is relatively narrow in this particular location, and is almost completely wetland.
So, was that designed purposely to minimize impacts to the surrounding area?
Absolutely.
Including the environmental impacts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Beck, is it your testimony that the hardship presented in this application is due to the unique characteristics of this lot?
Absolutely.
Would the Richards be able to access their property in the air of the way?
No.
Does this, does this application represent the minimum amount of relief necessary?
Yes, we, as mentioned, we reduced the length of the roadway in order to make sure that the fire engines had adequate access to the minimum necessary in order to get that 12-foot driveway in that particular area. So, again, we've basically minimized everything we possibly can in order to provide access to this existing lot.
Ms. Beck, in your opinion, will this project have any adverse effects on the surrounding area?
We have tried very hard to make sure that there will be no adverse effects, including making, having an opinion, quite frankly, that this is within the 100-year floodplain, which I believe some of the town personnel do not believe that that's the case. But we wanted to make sure that our wetland replication area not only provided for the one and a half to one replication for the wetland, but also to make sure that we were not filling within any floodplain and thereby creating a downstream effect to any of the abutters.
In your opinion, will the construction of this driveway and single-family home have any negative impacts to the surrounding area?
No.
Marble Road was intended to be a road, is that your understanding?
Yes.
This home will only provide access to a single residence, is that correct?
That is the intent, yes.
Is the hardship that's presented here the result of anything that the applicants did themselves?
No.
This was pre-existing natural conditions, correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of any impacts on air, lights, or use, anything to that extent?
No.
Are you aware of any negative effects on public access to the water?
No.
In your opinion, will, if this application is not granted, will this amount more than a mere inconvenience?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe I asked you this already, but just to make sure I did, does this application represent the least amount of relief that's necessary?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. Are there any questions, Ms. Beck?
I have one. Ms. Beck, you said you tried your best to not, to contain this and not have an effect on the surrounding property. Did you achieve that?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Beck, in addition to the area of the wetlands, did you evaluate the functions and values of those wetlands?
Yes.
Any special functions or values of those wetlands that you were not able to replicate in the replication project?
The existing wetland is predominantly forested, we have large trees. The wetland replication area would be...
Deforesting?
Deforesting a portion of that buffer zone, and it will take some time to replicate that exact condition, but other than that, we've replicated to the extent that we can.
Any varroa pools there?
No.
On Ms. Beck, the proposed improvements to the road, of the road, it is still a town road, but the applicants will be responsible to maintain that.
Yes.
Anyone else can drag down that road, being a, I mean, not that they need to, but they did, other than your vehicles? I guess my point is, this is not becoming a private road, a private dog right-of-way.
That is not the intent.
If I want to drag down the road, I can drive down.
Again, if we could have, quite frankly, we would have preferred it to be a regular driveway, 12 feet wide, but to the extent possible, we worked with the town in order to make it as best of a compromise as we could, getting it as close to the town's width as possible, but it will be maintained because we could not reach that.
Understood.
On the other side of Marble Road, I guess opposite, existing dwelling 39?
Oh, up there?
Yeah, what's, what's down here?
Nothing. Wetland.
There is wetland on that side, on that lot.
Yeah, this is, this is buffer zone. The 50-foot comes this way here, I don't know if you can see my hand, sorry, but there is 50-foot buffer zone here, and then upland over here, but basically, as you get further east, it gets more and more wetland.
So, is there any, is there a lot between there and Lot 132 that's demarked on the, on the map?
I'm, I'm not sure.
On the south side, Tom?
That's the south side, Jim.
Yeah, that road, Marble Road runs east and west.
Yeah, and the wetland comes in here, and then comes down here, and they have access frontage on Star Drive as well.
So, if that lot ever became buildable, they wouldn't need that road?
No.
Right. And what is, you said that you have to maintain the road, what, define that, like, what do you have to do, is it monthly, yearly?
It's going to depend upon the items within the road. For the most part, it would be very typical to what Narragansett already does with a town road, basically sweep it probably once a year in the spring, sand it if it's necessary for icing, et cetera. There's going to be two trench drains, as I mentioned, those two trench drains need to be monitored fairly frequently in order to make sure that they don't fill up with sediment. But again, their, their purpose is to make sure that water doesn't run into Star Drive, as well as to kind of trap those immediate sediments before they go into the wet swale, and then the wet swale will also have to be maintained in terms of looking at the sediment loaded in it, mowing it, that sort of thing, so.
So, those trench drains are exposed to the surface?
That's correct, there's a grate on the top, and basically, the bottom is solid, and it directs the water to flow into this wet swale here. And then, at the far end, we're proposing to have the snow removal, you know, the stockpile area, so we've paid attention to that as well.
Okay. And the proposed wet swale, is there a point connecting that with the...
Yes. From this location right here, underneath this driveway, to the wetland area here, but again, the design of the wetland is not a stormwater treatment, it's strictly replication, and all of the treatment for the impervious on the lot, as well as the road, is within the bio-retention and the wet swale.
So, in theory, the water leaving the wet swale has already been treated, has been treated?
Yes.
Ms. Beck, if this, if this variance is denied, will the applicants have any other economically viable use of these lots?
No.
Ms. Beck, just for the record, one and a half times is how, is equivalent to what in square footage?
The numbers are exactly. I don't know what happened here. The permanent alteration of wetland is 3,729, and the replication area is 5,614.
Thank you.
And again, all of this will be reviewed very rigorously by the Coastal Resources Management Council.
So, once we have approval, if we have approval here...
Correct.
...the D E M, Coastal Resources, and so forth, to go through that.
Absolutely.
The last point?
Yep.
I'm not sure if this is a crystal ringing question, enforcement of the maintenance of the road, is that something that has to be included in the decision?
I'm not sure how it's written, but it'll probably be done by DPW as far as monitoring, make sure it's properly done, it'll certainly be a condition of this approval, I would imagine. Maybe it's...
So, the, the operations and maintenance plan is referenced in the February 27, 2023 letter from the engineering department.
We have created an operation and maintenance manual that's going to be associated with the single-family lot, as well as with the road, and that gets reviewed and approved by the state agencies as well.
And obviously, that goes with the sale of the house if it's ever sold in the future.
That's correct.
How old do you have a question?
Yeah, I may have missed this, but where is the replication area?
I want to use my fingers. Mike, can we, oh, there we go. This is the replication area right here. And this is, I have to say that this is actually an old plan, Mike.
We, we discovered that about 15 minutes ago.
Yeah.
The plan before you that Karen gave to you, Ms. Beck gave to you, and the one that's in your package is the correct one?
Yep.
And you can see that the shape in this particular area...
Yeah, it comes up into this area in here. Originally, we tried to minimize the replication area only for a one-to-one, but then increased it to make sure that we had the one and a half to one, so it's in this area.
So, you can see it's slightly larger now. Sorry about that.
Did a lot of work on that.
We did. It's been a long battle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no additional testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone who is opposed to this and would like to speak? Mr. Gary?
Mr. Jimmy, the city's zoning board, John Garry, on behalf of myself and several of the neighbors that live in this area. We represent John Carney, who's here, who's Lot 113, which is this property right here, Paul and Elizabeth Choquette, Lot 87, who's directly across from the road here, Susan Weiner, Charles Bluto, Francis Castellari, and I know the Smiths are here, and they are Lot 111, just opposite Castle Road. There's a lot here, there's a lot here. Let me make a couple of points first, let me make this point first of all. We're not opposed to the Richards having their home on Star Drive. It's a terrific place to have a home. What we are opposed to is the displacement, the significant displacement of the wetlands, which will affect Mr. Carney and the other neighbors tremendously. I have the town's wetlands map and flood map here, which I'd like to present as an exhibit, which shows you in more detail the significant area of the wetlands, and present that as opposition exhibit one, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I think a one or an A, doesn't matter?
Opposition, opposition one.
Huh? Opposition, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I also have, and you, you don't really get a sense of it, but looking at this, I've been at many hearings where people have talked about wetlands, and then, you know, the plants represent wetlands, therefore, it's wet. This is wet. This is a river running right up the road, and I'm taking, these are pictures I took myself, so as you can see, and what you can see from the pictures is the condominium development right across, right over here, so these pictures were taken from here, looking across and up, and it's a significant river that runs on that property. You're going to get a sense of it by looking at it. The concern is that this displacement is going to have a significant, there's already, Star Drive is already wet, even when it's not raining, there's runoff on Star Drive when it's not raining. This is going to create havoc for the, for the neighbors, you know, this is all, I guess they were talking about the relocation over here, over here, is it going to work? Well, the engineer said, we've done our best, we hope it's going to work, and what if it doesn't? What if it doesn't? It's in the floodplain, and this is significant water that's going to be displaced. It's in the floodplain, and this is significant water that's gonna be displaced in order, in order to use the road. And Mr. Carney has made a significant effort to be able to allow them to access the property through his property. And not, not a holdup, not saying, you know, it's just very reasonable in order to switch the, the road onto his property with an easement, in order so they can access it, so it doesn't displace the wetlands. Mr. Carney also asked them to move the swale over onto this side of the road. Had some discussions with them, and they said, well, pay for half of it. He said, okay, and then the discussions went away. So there's, there's not an obstinance here on behalf of the neighbors to make this work. There's a, there's a reasonable effort to try to allow them to have their house. The concern is the displacement of the wetlands is gonna create a serious problem. And let me, let me talk about CRMC for a minute. They're concerned with environmental concerns. They're not concerned with whether or not the water ends up in Mr. Carney's basement, or Mr. Choquette's basement, or my basement. So they have concerns with respect to environmental conditions. But they're not concerned about where the water goes if that, if that occurs. This is a significant, and they say, now we're gonna create more wetlands than's already there. We've got all of this wetlands, which is significant, and we're gonna create more wetlands on the property. There's a reason why there has to have lots constructed on a street which has improved to town standards. There's a reason for that. It's not a dimensional variance. And let me be clear about that. It's not a dimensional variance. There's no frontage area required. It says, no, no billing permit shall be issued unless a lot of which is a proposed structure Mr. Constructors fronts on a street which has been proposed to town standards. So it's, it's kind of interesting that you don't have a requirement to have so many feet. You can't build it unless you're on a, 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 um, town-improved street. So significant issues with respect to that. And it's not an obstinance, there, there's a willingness to make this work, which has been not met with, with any success whatsoever. Let me, my, my brother did not want to get into the street issues, private street, public streets. So this is a street which is platted in nineteen sixty-four. Everyone on the plat, and let, let me just say this. This is more of a planning board issue. Doesn't it look more like a subdivision? It looks more like a subdivision, and I'm gonna talk about that. I think it is, it's a modification of the original subdivision. The original subdivision contemplated a forty-foot public road. So now we're down to a sixteen-foot private road, which only goes a hundred and fifty feet and not all the way up. Maintained by the owner, not by the plat. So it's significantly different than was anticipated originally, even though it was not approved in nineteen sixty-four because there was no approval process at the time. All they had to do was record the plat. So, so that's one thing. So the issue about the street is very significant. Rhode Island State Law. The owner of a property which abuts a platted street has rights to the middle of that street. It's subject to the rights of everybody to access it, but he has rights to use that, whether it's open or not, and whether it's public or private. So Mr. Carney has a right to go here and use his property. This is a private owner developing a street with a swale on it, which is reserved for street use. This would prevent Mr. Carney from getting into his property, and he has no, uh, he has not agreed to this. So we've been before this board where ownership of the application has become an issue. The staff says, well, we think CRMC, they should consider whether the town has to be a signatory to this application, whether all the platter owners have to be a, a signatory to this application because of the street. Well, I'd suggest to you that Mr. Carney, who owns to the middle of this street, has to be an applicant to this application. The improvement, no one, no one objects to the house. No one objects to the house. They object to what happens here. And the requirement that you're being asked for is to waive the requirement that, that it has to be on a street which has been improved to town standards. So it all relates to the street here. Just, no one asked Mr. Carney for his approval, and they're blocking him, and they're building a swale on his property in violation of the requirement that the street be maintained to be open as a street. So, you know, again, I wanna say that we're not against the building of the house. We're against what's gonna happen when this street is improved. It's, it's, it's not, uh, it's, um, proposed to be impervious. So they're gonna take all of this, although it's impervious, and it's gonna run down into Mr. Carney's property and Mr. Choquette's property, and the other property owners that are here. So there's very serious issues with respect to this, which you're being asked to waive as a requirement of the zoning ordinance. Again, it's a, it's not a dimensional variance, it's not a special use permit, it's a use variance. And I know I've been before this arguing whether it should be use variances and special use and all of that, but there's no dimension we're talking about here. We're talking about use. And I know that if they said, you know, would it be denied of all beneficial use? Well, no, they're not, because they have other means to get this if they want to. They have, they have other means to achieve this goal, which they seek not to pursue. So we're, we're certainly willing, you know, if this was impervious, it would help. If the swale was over on the other side, that would help. If, if it was an easement across this land, it would allow Mr. Carney to access his property and have them access their property. So there is a way to do it, which is not being considered. Now, let me, let me get into the issue of the, um, and I, I had notes, but I've gone all over the place here, so, um... Give me a minute, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Take your time, Mr. Gary.
Thank you. So let me get into the issue of, um... Why I think this is a, is a, is not properly before this board. I think this is a modification to an existing subdivision. The subdivision regulations provide that if there's a modification, which was not, uh, not contemplated by the original approval, that's what it says, original approval. Now, this was never approved. But if there's a modification, it's a major change, which has to go back before the planning board for approval, before a public hearing, and has to be considered. So, again, I think this is a major change, which requires, and then also a major change, let's see. Such major changes include, but not necessarily limit to the following. Changes which would have the effect of creating additional lots of development unit for development.
Wait a minute, additional lots?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Additional, additional lots of dwelling units for development. Not applicable here. Changes would be contrary to the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance or require a variance or special use permit from the zoning board to review. That's what we're here for. Changes which may have a significant negative impact on abutting property or property in the vicinity of the proposed subdivision of land development. So those are, those are the regulations in the subdivision ordinance. When you have a modification to an existing subdivision plat, they apply. The planning board did not review this. They only did site review, as they do with their applications. It was not before them as a land development project or a subdivision proposal. So they did not do a thorough review. They had asked, they had asked that the applicant prevent, present additional information with respect to the effect on abutting property owners. The planning board's report says that was not presented, that was not prevented. The planning board did make a finding of fact that the infill is not consistent with what the town should be doing in this case. They approved it, but made the comment that it's not consistent with what should be doing here. And I would, I would hate for this board, and I would think it would be an imperative to CRMC, if you were to approve it, they would say, well, okay, that's okay. That town is okay with it, we're okay with it. Because the environmental, because they're doing all this relocation, et cetera, to, to meet, you know, CRMC standards. But that doesn't, that doesn't protect the property owners, again, from water in their basement and from other actions which have an adverse effect. And, and God help us, when that happens, who do we go to and say, whoa, there's a, now we all got water in our basement? I, I, I'll, I'll wrap up, but there is significant impact to the neighbors here if this is allowed to go forward as proposed. It, it, it has a, it's, it's a, it's a river. And, and, and as I said, Mr. Carney has been more than reasonable to try to work something out, but then presented him a proposal at one time in order to try to, try to work it out so that they, they could have, more than reasonable. And, and we're not opposed. None of the neighbors are opposed to the development of the house. They're opposed to having the wetlands moved significantly so that they're gonna have an adverse impact on them. I know Mr. Carney and the Smiths may want to speak. That's my presumption.
Mr. Gary, in terms of relocating access under Mr. Carney's plan. Mr. Landry, do you wanna?
I'd like to reply, um, pretty much everything my colleague said.
I mean, I, I find that interesting that, that, is there an offer on the table to?
Well, well, there's not now because they rejected it. Well, I, I can give you plenty of context on that conversation, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Uh, well, at this point, I'd like to hear from Mr. Landry.
Sure. So, um, first, I, I just wanna say this is not a use variance. The use variances are for uses that are not located in the table of uses in the zoning ordinance. It's a permitted use. Uh, we're asking for variance from a provision of your ordinance that requires a lot, uh, before a permit could be issued, that it's on a lot, a road improved to town standards. We've already explained that we tried to improve to town standards, and there's reasons why it can't be done. That's the hardship that's presented. That's the only variance that we're asking for. We don't need relief from the subdivision regulations. We don't need relief from anything else. All it is, is that one ordinance provision that says it's gotta be an approved, uh, road to town standards. We've asked for relief from it because of the reasons that we've already explained. Now, even before my time, probably two years ago when this project started, my client had extensive conversations with this neighbor. Extensive neighbors, extensive conversations to the point where they even had an agreement drawn up. One of the conversations was a land swap. Can we get an easement over your property in order to bring a road in, not impact the wetlands to any extent that we can? Because that's something CRMC is gonna wanna see, that we were able to do it. Number one, we're not required to get an easement over somebody else's property. There's no legal requirement that you have to go and secure an easement over someone else's property. But we did. We tried to have that conversation. We couldn't come to an agreement. There was a land swap discussion. We could not swap land with this neighbor because it would render us more non-conforming, and we wouldn't have the setbacks that we need. So, yeah, we, we discussed that. We explored it. We couldn't come to terms. We, we, it was, it just wasn't possible. But we did explore that, and any suggestion that we didn't is, is blatantly false. Second, during the planning board hearings, two or three of them that we had, there was a few months in between, we did offer to move this to the other side of the road. At the planning board, there was testimony from, I'm not sure if it was Tom or Karen, that we explored it, and it was not possible to do. It was extraordinarily more expensive to do it that way. The systems would have to be all redesigned, and it would impact the wetlands even more than the location of the swale. Uh, so that was explored. It was discussed, and there was testimony in front of the planning board, and Karen can repeat that again this evening if it's necessary. Again, people have rights in this paper street. We're, we're not objecting to that. We're not suggesting it's not. This is a platted subdivision, and we're putting a road in where it was intended to go. That was the intent. Uh, there's no modification of a subdivision. We're not changing lots. We're not doing any of that stuff. Everybody else still has a right to access this. And this property owner already has access to his house. He doesn't need this. But he can certainly access it or try to do some access to it if he really wants to. We're not gonna restrict him, and we can't. Um, but he's already got frontage. He, he doesn't need this. It's, we're not prohibiting development or anything here. Um, and we've explored other options on the other side of the road that have proven to be infeasible. Um, so there were extensive discussions, uh, including during the planning board proceedings, where we tried alternatives. We tried to come to a land swap or even an easement. Uh, the parties couldn't agree, and there's no legal requirement to do that. So I, you know, to the extent that there's any suggestion this is a use variance or anything other than what it is. Um, it's a very, very simple variance, and, you know, respectfully, we all know that wetlands are now subject to state jurisdiction, not local jurisdiction. This is gonna be heavily vetted at CRMC. They're gonna look at it. And to suggest that CRMC doesn't care where the water goes, I can tell you that's, couldn't be further from the truth. They're gonna care all about these systems and where that water goes and how it's gonna affect our neighbors. We can't increase stormwater runoff onto any other properties than what exists now. So I would say, and I think the testimony has been in front of the planning board as well, that the systems that we're putting in place are actually improvement to what's actually there now, um, in the drainage issue. So, um, you know, thi- this is a variance from a very specific portion of your ordinance. It's strictly limited to the hardship related to having to improve a road to town standards. That's all that's before you. That, that's it. The wetland designs, all this front, all that, it's all jurisdiction for another board. The rights in a paper street, that's the Superior Court. It's not within the purview of this board, respectfully.
Mr. Landry?
Oh, Mr. Landry?
Mr. Landry?
So this may be only a question that I don't know the answer to.
Sure.
But when you relocate wetlands, I mean, I was looking at those pictures that, that Mr. Garry put before the board. And, I mean, it does look like there's a lot of water. Now, I don't know if that was after a big rainstorm, but it looks like there's a ton of water. So when you make a road, you move the wetlands, you, you, you must bring in fill. I mean, I'm trying to figure out the, the, you know...
I'm not the wetland expert. I would ask Ms. Beck if she could come on.
Okay, so maybe, maybe, maybe it's a question.
The mechanics of it is probably more for Ms. Beck.
The mechanic. So, so I'm assuming you bring, you, you have to bring something in to make it not wet, right? And then you, you move, and then you create, have another place where you make the wetland. So what are you, so, but, but water will still come there, so you have to bring in a lot of fill? Or you, I, I don't know what you have to do. You can tell me. But the biggest question I have is, once you do all that to create this road that's not gonna go road away because water's coming in, where are you putting the water? Where is the water? Have you designed something so that the water is now going way away and not that way? And not to the, across the street to the other property, and not down to that property?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what will happen is the roadway will have to be, the existing soils will have to be excavated out of it, in particular the area where the wetland is, because that's a very mucky, um, organic soil material, and it will not support the weight of a roadway, et cetera. And in addition, because we wanna replicate the wetland, we're actually gonna stockpile those soils and reuse them in the wetland area. So again, the soils, the hydrology, the vegetation is gonna be as close as possible to the area that's being lost. So we're gonna remove all that material. We're gonna be putting in structural material underneath the roadway to make sure that it's supported. The groundwater is not gonna change in terms of the overall area because this is a very large wetland system. It's immediately adjacent to the coast, et cetera. So we're not changing the groundwater in any way, shape, or form. What we're going to be doing is making sure that the, um, material underneath the proposed roadway is gonna support structurally that roadway system. And again, this is all gonna be impervious. So, um, again, on the other, uh, mapping, you'll see there are two swales in two different locations so that as the water comes down here, it'll get trapped first by this, uh, trench drain here, go into the wet swale here, and then anything that bypasses it or is lower in elevation than that will come to this trench drain and again go into that wet swale. So the town reviewed our stormwater calculations. We had multiple conversations with them to make sure that what we were designing was gonna make sure that there would be no increase into Star Drive, across the street, into Mr. Carney's property, which is higher in elevation, quite frankly, so the water can't even get there. So that has all been taken into account. Now, in terms of floodplain and any surface water that is in this particular wetland area, the floodplain and wetland compensation area is bigger than that wetland. It's one and a half times the, um, wetland area, and the floodplain compensation, again, has been oversized to make sure as much as possible that we're gonna trap that water and make sure that it doesn't go to anybody else's property and cause any downstream of others, any, um, harm. We've paid attention to it. We know what the regulations are. It's been reviewed by the town engineer. It will be reviewed by CRMC. We know what the regulations are. We're making sure we're conforming that to them to the greatest extent that we can. The only one that we couldn't conform to, basically, was the width of the roadway and the extent that that, um, improved roadway continues past the subject lot.
So, Ms. Beck? Well, yeah, I just had one question, a couple of questions. That wet swale, is it south the other way?
South. South and down here.
If you move it the other side of the road, why would, why would that be, that wouldn't be beneficial as far as what I'm looking at. Is that the argument?
Yes, because what happens is the way, even if we moved this roadway over, one of the benefits to having the road on the south side of the wet swale is it creates a dam, basically.
Right.
So we make sure that the water goes into the swale and then is forced to go into this pipe underneath the existing driveway and this direction. If we tried to put this in here, even if we moved the roadway over, we have to go down from the roadway, up, over, and then down again. That takes a considerable lot more land area because we can take advantage of the fact that it's high on this side, we only have to come down from that and come up and over to the roadway. So there's a lot less surface area that we need in order to accomplish what we need to for stormwater treatment on this side than if we did it on this side. And quite frankly, I mean, if you really needed access to Mr. Carney's property, all he has to do is put in a culvert, a pipe, that's it.
Okay, that's where I was going next. But I would think if I was the homeowner at Mr. Carney's house, I would want that closer to my house, correct?
The wet swale?
Just like it is, the swale, right, it's before my house.
It's, it's all down slopes, so it's not like it...
Right, because that, that house has got higher elevation, so that water couldn't get to him.
No, it can't.
Right, okay, that's...
You'll get, you'll get your chance. Any other questions? Tony, you have one question.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. I have nothing else.
So, Mr. Landry, can you opine on the Mr. Carney's ownership to the middle of the road? I've never heard that argument before, talk to me about that.
Yeah, and, you know, respect, I don't want to get too into it because it's for a different forum, you know, ownership rights. There's a doctrine of incipient dedication and I could put everybody to sleep going through this, but whenever there's a recorded plat that's filed in the land evidence records and has roads and streets set forth on it with lots developed, there's this incipient or assumed intent dedicated to the town use of all the lots on that, on that plat. And over time, I'm assuming this, and Marble Road, by the way, goes even further enough, there's a much larger portion of this road that's covered in wetlands that never got developed. It's most likely because of all the wetlands that a lot of those properties were never, never developed and they never needed to bring the road in. So there are certain inherent rights to the plat owners on a plat and paper streets. My understanding of laws, anyone has a right to improve it. They all have equal rights to improve that paper street. We can't restrict anyone's use of that. You know, we can't say, no, you can't use our road because we're paying for it and we're aware of that. I mean, Richards are doing this at their expense, but we recognize that, so we're not arguing that, we're not arguing that he doesn't have some interest in this paper street. The extent of those rights are for another forum, but I would say that we're not prohibiting anyone's access to use this road. Why they would want to use it, I'm not sure. But yeah, you could, anybody on that plat could improve the street, as long as it's acceptable to the town and whatever standards are necessary.
Thank you. Can I just address that? I just want to, there's two cases in Rhode Island, and I don't want to go down that road, but it's clear on Rhode Island, and let me just cite the cases. Wolf versus the City of Providence.
Say again, Wolf, say, Wolf?
Wolf.
Okay.
With an A on the end. Versus the City of Providence, 77 Rhode Island, 192 from 1950. And Anthony versus the City of Providence from 1894. So, and the owner of a premises is presumed to be the evidence of evidence in the contrary to own to the feet of the street to the middle of the street. So, so let me just be clear on it. The street, people have rights in the street, even in highways, they have rights to the street which cannot be taken away, even in a public street. But the ownership is to the middle of the street and if it's not used as a street, the owners of each property, when you have an abandonment of a street, there's an abandonment of the street, who gets the property? The owners on each side get to the middle of it. So it's a, it's a clear provision of law that they own to the middle of the street, subject to the rights of others to use the streets that are either platted for private use or for public use. Thank you.
So, Mr. Gary, just to be clear, so your argument is that by placing the swale, the wet swale there, it's impacting Mr. Carney's rights to that street, so?
I'm arguing two things. First of all, it's impacting his rights to use the street, first of all. Second of all, as the owner of the street, he has to consent to what's going on in the street. So essentially, they're, they're not using the street for a street, they're using it for a swale, in violation of Mr. Carney's rights in his property. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope to God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
My name is John J. Carney, K-E-A-R-N-E-Y.
Thank you.
So I'm not an attorney, I have no idea about bio or engineering or any of that, I just own this piece of property here. So you can see where the wetland is. And I've been here for 30 years, I've been around this property most of my life. But anyway, this tree that they've put in here isn't really where it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be over here. Now, originally, when I was talking to Steve and Nathan, we were talking about them buying some property on this side and then going into their property in the back. And for that, they were going to give you this part of property that they're took about putting in that bioequo or whatever it is, it's going to connect it to the swale. So they were talking about that. And I said to them that I really needed to have my attorney look at it. At the time, the attorney, who's also my uncle, was Jim O'Neil. And so I said to him, and he told me, he says, well, you know, what are they, what are they going to give to you for it? And I said, well, not give me any money, they're going to take care of all the deeds and stuff. He says, do you really want to sell it? I said, well, I don't know, Jim, I'm just trying to be neighborly because I don't want to stop them from building a house back there. I mean, that's not my intent and I have no intention of doing that, at all. So that didn't, that really didn't work out. But here's where the wetland ends. There's, there's the wetland, it comes back here a little bit, would be where the wetland ends. And here's where the road comes in. So then we talked about maybe building the road here and then coming into my property here, and then going along the back of my property here and connecting up into their driveway. And for that, and I talked with Steve about it, and I said, what can I do? He says, well, you can give them an easement, a permanent easement, that they be able to do this and they don't have to go through all this gyration of swales and roads and craziness. They just put the road here where there's no wetland, so you're going to cross here, go, go back here, you can go right into there. And I said, well, why don't you do that? And I'll give you an easement. And for that, you can give me this piece of property. Now, when we talked about they need this because of the water and stuff like that, I had talked about that with my neighbors a long time ago, about putting in some type of trench here to go into this wetland to alleviate some of the problems. So I had no, I'd be willing to even put that in there, okay? And have them have an easement, come in here, go through, have an easement, go right into their driveway, build a house, put in all their other stuff that they need to, and they'd be all set. I mean, like, why, I just don't understand the big problem, why do we have to make a mountain out of a mold everywhere? Really, I just don't, I just don't understand that concept where you have to, I want it this way and only this way. There's got to be other ways, it's just not that black and white. Let's, let's be creative. I'm willing to be creative, I'm willing to give them access through my property permanently until I die and my relatives die and I sell the house and the next people come in, it'll be part of the, the deed. And that's fine. And it saves a lot of problems, a lot of anguish, and a lot of movement of water. You know, I mean, he and I, we originally had this agreement, we, he came in with this, I said, no, I'm not going to sell my property to you. I came up with this one, which had the revision in it and had it as a, as an easement. And when you say we had extensive conversation, we didn't have very extensive conversations, we had some limited, we had some heated debate, we had some heavy arguments. There wasn't like nice, easy going, but I thought at least we could come to some type of an agreement without having me have to have this swale next to my property, because I did want to. And I think that, you know, this is the United States of America, if I want to have my driveway on this road versus having it on this road, I think I'm allowed to do that. I, I don't think in America, they tell you, you've got to go out on Star Drive because that's the road you're allowed out on because there's another road here, but you can't use that road. It's, it's a, it's a private road, which is used, you can go on that road, but you can't use that road. Why?
Well, I think Mr. Carney did...
And then I can put a, I can put a pipe here and then go across it? It, it's not here. I don't know, bring it up to here and have a swale, you know? And then have me put my driveway into, into the road. If I put this driveway into the road and they put, they came along with the easement, they could then come in with trucks and stuff like that back into my driveway and back out. It'd be wide enough for them to do it. They could, they could bring a hook and ladder through there. And they'd be safe, their home would be safe, it wouldn't burn to the ground. All right, that's my take, I'm sorry if I upset you.
Mr. Carney, so I'm still not sure, I understand you don't like it, but I'm not sure what your opposition is.
My opposition is putting this swale in front of my, I would like to put my driveway right in here, but just bring my driveway, have your, have the easement, have them just come through to here and switch into my, and I just connect my driveway in and we both use it.
So, do you want to move your driveway?
Yeah, I'm just going to take this, because this will give me property here, it's just nice. I have my grays, I have five and a half, I have a lot of friends, they can play, it gives them a yard, gives them more yard. You know, because I can go like this and go straight like this.
I think this is some...
Get rid of this, get rid of this driveway.
Mr. Carney, we're getting kind of far afield of what's being asked.
Put a peckle cord here.
We can't get, we can't get involved in designing this and, you know, forcing the Richards to go and drop it.
No, you can't, you can't, but I mean, I just, I'm really opposed to this thing coming in on my property. And you said about the water, you were asking about the water, and you said, well, it's, it's down here and that's up there. But I have a, I have a, I have a basement, and my basement is lower than this. So that water can travel, and I already get water, some water, and I have a pump in my basement, I already get some water, so it's, this thing here and this thing here is just going to add to my aggravation, but that's okay.
That also will not add to your impression as far as...
But we don't know that. I didn't, I didn't address the house. I mean, the house displacing all the trees and the forest and everything else and all the water that's going to come from there, I didn't even address that. That's not for me to address because I don't want to prevent them from building a house and I think that they're going to do the necessary things to make sure that they don't get water in my house. But putting in this swale, I don't, putting in this swale prevents me, makes me have to spend extra money on a road. It could have been a public road that I could have just driven onto. Now I got to expend money to go onto a road. I didn't have to expend money to go on a Star Drive, but now I'm going to have to expend money to go on a public road because they're putting a swale in front of it. Swale that's not there right now, there's nothing there right now. This is here. This here is all like land. It's all clear, I can show you a picture, it's got gray, you know, there's, there's all grass and everything in there.
You lost me. So you planned on making a driveway and we just don't know about it?
Again, not when, when and if a road ever came in there, sure, I'd put a driveway there and I'd take this driveway out.
But the town has no intention of putting a road there.
So I'm just going to keep this driveway. I mean, with that, I got to get it out of my property somehow, just like you want to get out of his property.
Well, I don't think, you wouldn't be able to put that driveway there, you'd have to put a swale in of some sort anyway, so that kind of doing the legwork for you.
Why would I have to put a swale?
Well, there's a wetland there, it has to be...
It's here. It's not, if they put the road in, if they put the, they come in here and they come across with an easement and I just come right into the easement, I'm not going anywhere near this water, I'm going into the easement. And then, then we both go out here and come out here.
Well, again, that's not...
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, you asked me, and there was some, there was a lot of discussion about the discussions that we had prior to this coming to this. I'm just showing you what the progress was, but the final was never discussed, which I thought was the solution and I thought it was a pretty good solution myself.
Ellen, did you have a question?
I just, you said, I mean, I think what you're saying is, you know, I want to give them an easement, give them an easement. Is the easement at, are you, you're proposing at no cost?
They, they, well, they'll put it in the road, they'll put it into whatever driveway.
But I mean, but are you, I guess, giving you an easement and a, hold on.
They were going to give me this, this, this little piece of property.
Oh, so, okay, so it's, it would be a land swap?
Yes, well, it's not a land swap because mine is an easement. I mean, I still have ownership of that land. I mean, if they found gold under it, they'd have mine.
I think we're getting very far afield here. So we, I mean, basically, what is in front of us is a road frontage.
That's correct.
I mean, and that's it. We don't have purview on wetlands anymore, do we?
No.
That's all, Coastal took that over.
It's a dimensional variance in the road frontage requirement, that they be on a road approved to town standards.
Right.
All right, so that's, in the order in section 25, subsection four, road frontage, that gives you the specific language that you have to deal with. And then there's, there's been talk about, and both sides got into it about the ownership to the middle of the road, but that's, that's not for you to determine. That, that's a potential temporary restraining order if you were to approve this and if the road were going to attempt to be built as it's proposed, that's a big if. There could be a Superior Court action if the objective was wanted, if they prevailed on the issue that Mr. Gary owns to the middle of the road and you can't put a swale there without my consent? Okay, fine, but that's not for you to decide. So there's been a lot of, a lot of other tangential issues that have come up, I'm not saying that any were insignificant in any way, but they're not before you to rule them. So yes, you are correct.
So if this were a perfect world, this is for the board members, right, there's a 40-foot easement that the town owns. Town standard is 24-foot wide.
Town doesn't own, town doesn't own it.
In a perfect world, they come in, put a 24-foot wide road, access the property, and there'd be no issues. But because you've got the significant wetlands on there, now you've got, you've got to treat it here and then you've got the reclamation area one and a half times of what they're going to disturb. So I think what's in front of us is the fact that they're looking for relief on this roadway. We don't control the wetlands, it's not in front of us anymore, it's there. It's basically a simple request. And I know it's a significant issue as far as, as a wetland goes there, but we don't have purview of that.
So just to follow up on that, Jim. Is it as simple as if we're satisfied that the property, that the Richards will take ownership of that street, well, not ownership, will take maintenance responsibilities of that street away from the town? That's really the only thing that we need to be concerned about?
Well, the fact that, I think we have to be... Well, the fact that, I think we have to be concerned with the fact that they can adequately, adequately access their property and that, you know, in the event of an emergency, emergency vehicles can get there. And obviously the maintenance of that, of everything that's going into that, that's not, um, you know, you have drainage.
And drainage.
You know, you've got storable, you've got everything that's associated with, with the road.
But aside from that, I think what you're saying is CRMC needs to determine the wetland issues and as, as Principal Harry said, the issue of Mr. Carey's rights to access his property from there isn't happy for us.
No, because that's why I say in the, if this were a perfect piece of property, the Richards could come in, post a bond, build a road. Then Mr. Carney could, if he wanted to, because it, it would be built to town standards and it's a public road, he could access, he could change his driveway as long as he got permission from the town and access that new portion of the road. I'm not saying he can't do it once. This is built, if it's built, but I'm just, if that were, if, if, if it weren't such a compromised piece.
Mr. Chairman.
That's what would happen.
I don't know if this has helped or not, but... So what's before you tonight is a dimensional variance on whether or not he meets the standard, the legal standard for dimensional variance, the applicant for the frontage. So he's got, he's got a certain length along this, we're calling a paper road. If that was a town road, he wouldn't be here.
Right.
But it's not. You're not approving the road design. Okay, just to make that clear. If there were, if there were to be an approval, you're not approving the road, you're not approving the design of the road. You're saying if there's a road there and it's substandard pursuant to section four under, uh, section 25, sub four, it says it has to be approved to town standards or for which inadequate surety bond is being posted. And that was in one, I think, a letter from...
Engineering Department.
Engineering Department on February 27th of this year. So if he meets the standard and you post a surety bond, you should determine whether or not they met the standards under section 25, sub four. When you determine that, more than a mere inconvenience, you're within a dimensional variance standard, the least relief necessary. If you find that they meet those, and Mr. Kyle touched on something when he asked, is there any other beneficial use if this was denied? And if you make that determination, that will lead you to a decision. Those will be your criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted, for the record, to reflect that a lot of talk about dimensional variance. There's no dimensions. There's no dimensions. You either have to be on the town-approved road or you don't get a building permit. There's no, you've got to be within five feet, 25 feet. There's no dimension. It's going to be a dimension for dimensional variance, just for the record.
I understand the argument. And the response to that is the entire length. They need dimensional relief for the entire length of the lot. Because right now they have zero frontage on a road approved to town standards. They have none. Potentially, but if the road goes in, they still have none unless they meet the standard for dimensional variance. Then they would have, so they would need, if the lot is 250 feet wide along that road, they would need 250 feet of dimensional relief. They need 100%.
You're past the effect. Of course, I don't.
They, they, they're not going to have one foot of frontage on a town road to town standards, even if that goes in, because it's 16 feet wide, not 18. So they need 100% relief from that requirement. That's what they need. Mike shaking his head, making you a rule.
Yes. Yes, it's, uh, remember that whenever you're developing, whenever anyone's developing a plat, okay, think of, forget about this, think about new plats. When a, when someone wants to build a house on, on a property, the roadway in front of their property has to run the full length of that property. For, you know, for a lot of reasons. One is for access and all that, but the other is so that the next guy down the road doesn't have to build more road than he, than he really should. So the responsibility is to make certain that you build the road for the full width of your property. 25.4, 25.14 says that's your standard requirement. And it's the same, very same. It's because the proposal doesn't meet town standards, even though a 50, not 50, a few feet of that roadway is in front of their, uh, their property, it doesn't meet town standards, so they do need 100% relief on the, on the access to roadway. So that's why I was nodding my head.
So there is a dimension. It's the entire length.
Well, there's actually, there's two dimensions. There's dimensional width of the road itself, which is actually is 24 feet.
The standard is 24, but in, in the subdivision regulations, which the Public Works Department acknowledges, we do allow reduction down to 18 feet. And there is even something in the subdivision regulations that allows reduction down to 16 feet in certain circumstances. But the policies of the Public Works Department and Engineering and, I believe, the Fire Department also do not accept anything less than 18 feet. Hence the dilemma that the applicant faced in this case. And I wrote a, I wrote a letter to the applicant, which is in your packet, about that some months ago.
This is relief for the lot, not the road.
Right, that's right. All right, so we're clear.
Mr. Chairman, I think that maybe other people just want to come in. I don't want to cut them off and...
No, I'm not going to, no, everyone's good. Mr. Carney, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just said, I apologize, but your guys said you can't. So put it on the other side, bring the order closer to here. And you have more footage.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Yes, ma'am.
Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so happy God? Please state your name and spell your last.
Nancy Richards, R.I.C.A.J.R.D.S.
Thank you.
And basically, what I have to say probably doesn't have any effect on your opinion, but there are neighbors here and it might have an effect on their opinion. They're going to be my neighbors if I ever build a house here. There was a slight misrepresentation about what was offered to us. We offered to purchase the land, um, in several different ways. We actually had our engineers do several different plans and we had an agreement and then we didn't have an agreement. And what he says he wanted was, this little section here is totally inaccurate. He wanted 30 feet, the entire length of our property, which would have been a little more than two and a half times the easement. He didn't want to sell us his land. He wanted to give us an easement, but he wanted us not to give him an easement, to take our land. And when we, he, we had another final meeting and he brought his cousin, the ex-attorney general, I think, to intimidate us.
Uncle.
Uncle, whatever. I said, should we bring an attorney? And he said, oh, no, this is friendly, except that then there was a, a talk about us purchasing. We're already giving this man two and a half times and we have had, I don't know how many changes. We redrawn contracts, redone, um, the engineering, and here we go again. And it's just one delay after another. So yes, we did try to work with him right from the beginning. He was extremely nice to us. He said, I don't, it's not that I don't want you to build. I want to be friends. I just want all your land. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
We'd just like to rebut that because they offered me when they came 35 feet. Then they came back and said, I can't give you 35.
All right, but Mr. Carney, we can't, I mean, so that's, that's, he said, she said. Is there anyone else? Mr. Landry, do you have anything to add, sir? Give me the last word.
I don't want to belabor the point. Mr. Chairman, I, I think we've pretty much clarified that this is, in my opinion, a more simple application before you than it's kind of progressing into with wetlands. And, you know, we're, we're very mindful of everything else that's going on here. There are procedures at CRMC that allow designs like this to take place. Certainly understand that if, if there were an approval, it would be conditioned upon state approval for all these systems. There would be a separate application for the road design to be PW and the town. All that will be heavily vetted. You know, this, this is a legally established lot before the advent of zoning. It's been in existence, I think, since the 50s at least. And it was established with the intent of a road to be there. If it was 18 feet, we wouldn't be standing here today because that's what's allowed under ordinance. We testified that we wanted it to be dedicated to the town and make it a public street. But because of that road standard, because we can't get to 83 feet, it has to be 16 feet for all the reasons that were already discussed and testified about. So Mr. Richards is going to assume responsibility for it. He's going to assume the cost, the great expense of engineering and designing it and building it and doing it. But this was always intended to be a road. Everybody on this plat that bought a property was aware that a road was intended along Marble Road. There's no modification to this. There's no misfeasance or misrepresentation about what's happening. Everybody has a right to develop that paper street and that's what we're doing. He's exercising his right to access his property, which is the only means of access to this. And, you know, again, like I said, there's no legal requirement to acquire an easement over someone else's property, but they've explored that exhaustively. They, they tried, it didn't work. And that's why it's not a requirement. Sometimes parties can't come to a beating of minds. If we could make this 18 feet and not have to request variance, that certainly would have been a lot easier. We tried and the engineering wasn't possible because of all the hardships that are inherent with that. I think this lengthy discussion has just shown the hardships that are inherent with trying to build a single house on this lot that the Richards have a right to do. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Chairman, it's a day motion that closes public hearing. So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? There are none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries five zero. In regards to Richards, what is the board's point?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with regard to project summary, Richards tax assess of plat A, lots 114 to 115, dated May 12th, 2023. Locations Marble Road. The applicant is seeking relief from section 25 dot one, road frontage variance. Period. I would deduct these as our findings of fact that we have our applicant was represented by an active injury. The property is being, Richards owned four lots, two of which are being administrated, administratively subdivided to create this one lot. The, the road that they're looking to install is a 16 foot by 150, 150 feet long. The road will be maintained by the Richards as a, their responsibility. We heard from Karen Beck, Principal and Senior Principal of Engineering, Artividing. She's recognized as an expert witness in landscape architect and site planning. She described the combination of the two lots, the combining of the two lots. The size of the house are the unique characteristics of the land and road in the project itself as it appears exhibit one is submitted. The applicant, or she described the replication of the wetland disturbance by one and a half times the disturbance itself and described where the location is on that exhibit one. Talked about bio-retention areas and the wet swale, the two trench streams along the road. That will be, which will meet CRMC and town regulations. It's a lot to go through CMC approval for all of this. Do I make the point that the town no longer has purview over, over wetlands? It's been removed. So state has the plan, has the, has the purview over that, jurisdiction over that. She testified through questioning through Mr. Landry that the standards to be met have been met for the variance and also testified that the way this is designed is the least relief necessary. We had zero proponents and three opponents. Mr. Calhoun, representing, I didn't catch all the names, but quite a few neighbors and so forth. They've made part of the record. It has a significant impact on lot 113 on Mr. Carney specifically and the neighbors testified and presented exhibit one photos of the wetland describing as a river and standing water as opposed to just a roadway. Also some suggestions about putting the swales on the opposite side of the street. Talked about ownership of the road itself, the land is here. And that this was a modification to an existing subdivision. Principal Landry brought in that the, as we got to the easement by Mr. Landry, Mr. Carney's property, it was just not, it was impossible to make, to come to an agreement. So we have this project in front of us now. Additionally, it's not possible, it wasn't possible to relocate the swale to the opposite side of the street due to technical issues as well as significant recent cost. We had Mr. Carney as an opposition who essentially, in, in a short phrase, opposes the swale in its toll, in its toll of where it sits. Mr. Richards came up and explained both the agreement discussions that they had, which a lot has nothing to do with this, but, but discussion. The comments from town are also included in the project summary, which will be included. So the entire project summary is included as the findings of fact. I'll stop there.
Do you want to mention the point you brought?
I know.
A second. A motion has been made and properly seconded to enter the findings of fact into the record. Is there any discussion? Well, if this is the time to bring it up or, um, actually, I think it is the time. Keith's point about, um, losing beneficial use of the property if this, um, if access is not granted, I think is a critical part of the findings on this.
Wait, it should be added.
That was, um, obviously, it's a, they applied it and buildable lots. It's just, they need the access to it. So I think that is the, 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 the. Okay. So any further discussion on the findings of fact? There are none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the same project summary, Richards, tax assess of plat A, lots 114 to 115, dated May 12th, 2023, Marble Road. The applicant seeking relief from section 25 dot one, road frontage variance. The plating board has reviewed and has provided a recommendation for, recommendation for performance three to zero and recommendation for approval. and recommendation for approval three to zero. There are eleven conditions suggesting, like.
Correct, there are eleven conditions.
Yeah, eleven conditions. Staff all still apply. My emotions, a couple of things. My emotions for grant the relief requested. There's a lot of discussion that was had here that had absolutely nothing to do with, in my opinion, with the relief that's been requested. We're here strictly for the variance for the frontage of the lot. The greens that were had, the design is all outside purview of this board. So if you guys can get any green together, go for it. If you can't, deal with it. So my motion is grant the approval with conditions one through eleven. Do you need a condition to include the maintenance of the road?
I think that's number four.
I believe it may be number four in here, but it's also a condition of the engineering letters dated February 27, 2023. There were two letters in the same day.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
No, let's get more.
I do, so Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burnett, I would just add, since this is the variance for the entire frontage of the lot, I believe both lots totaled, I just had it, 459.37 feet.
Frontage.
Frontage. That's the variance.
That's the variance, thank you.
Motion is to approve. Second. A motion has been made and properly seconded to grant the relief requested with conditions. Is there any discussion? Here is none. All who are in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries five zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
One second.
It's going to take a five minute, five minutes.
All right, next and final item on the agenda this evening, Antonucci. Tax Assessor's Plaid N-S Lot 183, located at 75 Treasure Road. Mr. Garrett, nice to see you.
Chairman, nice to see you. Thanks to the board. Kind, Garrett. And we have the applicant and the owner of the property. Simple addition to a house. So, do we have those graphics?
Sure.
So, Mr. Garrett, where do you want us?
That's not it.
No, I know, we're frozen.
Oh, I'm frozen, I'm sorry. Over here, it's looking great. I'm gonna have to get out of this and restart it.
Well, I can start. So, Mr. Chairman, so as I do with all my clients, this plan has had significant revisions before it gets to staff or the planning board with respect to floor area ratio and those issues. So, I'm the first barrier.
First line of defense.
First line of defense. So, I just wanna make that clear because it's not as we see it, we review it and we have a sense as to what you like and what you don't like, so to speak. And so, we've made significant revisions to begin with. Floor area ratio was the first part that went, okay? And so, it was gone before the planning board even saw it. So then, we went to the planning board and they had some suggestions with respect to the plan and we made some further revisions to the deck, to reduce the size of the deck and come before you. So, we kept, and as a result of that, we now meet the lot area coverage requirement because of 15% requirement on the decks, if you meet that. I still don't understand that fully, but nevertheless, we meet that requirement. So, and so, in consultation with your staff, we essentially had meet the softcape requirements, the lot area requirements, the coverage requirements. The hardscape is off by .10%, .36 versus .35. So, what we really attempted to do is to make it compliant as much as possible. And I'll wait until we see the plans to describe it a little bit more, but there was a parking lot which was on the street, the parking for this property was on the street, and a lot of it encroaches upon the street. And we removed that. So, that was encroaching on Burbank, and so, we removed the parking over there. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
No, that's okay. So, I'm gonna have the designer explain, he had some graphics which you could, we're gonna have him get up and explain them in a minute. But let me just tell you, so essentially, the existing structure is here, the front line is on Treasure Road. So, we need a little bit of a variance on the front yard, but it was already, the existing structure was already in excess of the front yard requirement. So, the proposed addition is into the side yard over here. The 10 feet is required, we're at 7.88, so we need that side yard requirement. The difficulty here was at the side yard, this side yard, which abuts Burbank Avenue, as you can see, Treasure Burbank Avenue. So, the parking is gonna be removed and we're not gonna have that. And as it indicates, it was into the encroachment with the car. Now, granted, there is still a side yard short here, it's 3.8, we did, we reduced the size of this deck, where it used to go out further over here, so we tried to reduce that as much as possible.
How's that, is that a little better?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. So, we did make a real effort to comply with all of the requirements, and the hardscape is, as I say, just off a little bit, and I'll say this, we had a little bit of discussion as we have with what the numbers are and probably, you know, what the numbers are versus, you know, and Jill does a great job and does her hand rule, and we had to change a little bit as a result of that. But we did try to comply fully and we were off just slightly on the hardscape, but otherwise compliant. So, if I could have the designer come up, I'm just gonna have him describe what his design, the design of the structure. Do you have those other graphics that I sent you today?
We do, you get a sculpt for the night.
Okay.
Please, do you sound least fair that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Christopher Ducharme, D-U-C-H-A-R-M-E.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Ducharme, are you responsible for designing this addition to this house?
Yes.
Okay. And can you go through, we have several views of the structure as proposed, some of them show existing conditions and some of them show additions. So, can you show what you've done?
Cue me.
Just one, let's go to the next slide. So, on the left-hand side, you can see the existing house, which is a Cape-style house. And as John had said, it was already built, the lot has some challenges, and we had some outstanding parking issues on Burbank Avenue on this side. So, with the design, the intent was to bring the parking proper to the front at Treasure Road, the front door faces Treasure Road, that's the address for the dwelling. Let's go to the next slide. So, the side area, you can see, there's crushed stone, there's driveway here, really not proper for parking, it actually doesn't meet our parking requirements, so that was a big design intent to nail down the parking requirements, as John had said. We are at revision J so far with the plans, and I think we're done.
As I said, yes.
So, yes, so we put a lot of thought and effort into it, and Jill has been very kind to work with us and help us along and guide us with the farm. So, let's go to the next slide, and basically, we're just gonna take a walk around the house. So, what John had spoken about, I don't know if this, this area right here is in the setback still, so we're looking for left-hand and right-hand side relief, so we did pull this back so we would give ourselves more room to the side setback. So, that's one of the areas. We can go to the next slide, it'll show you more of a view from Burbank looking towards Treasure and the modifications and improvements. So, we're adding heavy landscaping on this side to really fit in with the neighborhood. We have some really beautiful houses around us, we're trying to bring this house up to the same level. Go to the next slide. That just shows us the back. We are hoping to put some type of landscaping in for privacy on the side within the property line. Next slide. This just shows the left-hand side of the lot. I don't have, you know, the neighboring houses around it, and then we can just keep going. I think there's two slides left. That's a north elevation, Burbank in the back, Treasure here, and then the last slide should show you the front elevation, Treasure Road. I think that's what we have for slides.
Yeah, and the garage is, it's a car and a half, it's not a huge garage, right? It's a medium-sized garage with the living space up above?
Yes.
And the setback in the front goes out a little bit, but essentially, it's pretty close to where the existing location was, is that correct?
Correct. So, this part of the house here is being built on the same foundation as this part of the house. This is the addition here.
Any questions for Mr. Ducharme?
Mr. Ducharme, so the left-side setback according to the revised plan, revised project, sorry, I did, may I peruse you, is 3.84, 10 feet is required. How wide is that?
That deck is 10 feet wide.
10 feet wide. And you don't feel that you can reduce that?
At the widest, yeah, at the widest point.
So, you may not be answering that.
Could we go back three or four slides?
Tell me.
Keep going. One more. So, this area here is a 10-foot, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's what's necessitating the
Correct.
side yard setback.
Correct, it gets reduced to a setback, isn't that shown on the site plan? And as John had started out, he was showing this area had to be pulled back.
Mike, can you just go to the site plan for a minute?
I was just about to do that.
Right.
I'll blow it up for you if you want.
Thank you. This is the area in question that you had just mentioned, correct?
Yeah. And the area of the, the size of the deck where it gets reduced is how, 10 feet?
Four and a half.
Is it four and a half?
Four and a half, so it's four and a half at that point, it gets from 10 to four and a half.
Okay.
We reduced that, let me just make that point clear. It was 10 feet, as the planning board reviewed it, all the way down to the stairs, and we reduced it, we reduced it to four and a half to make it a narrower approach over there. It's not 10 feet all the way to the stairs.
Okay, thank you. I think one thing we have to look at is the interior angle. You've got 90 degrees over here.
Correct.
Moving.
Exactly.
What a bit of real lot line.
Exactly, Mr. Chairman, it was square, that issue wouldn't be there. And of course, that's in the street, it's in the street right away, like the first application, where the setback was against the street and not against anybody's house.
Do you sound least fair that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
P as in all, I M E N T E L.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you all set with any questions?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cimental has testified before this board once or twice?
I can cut you off right now. Mr. Cimental will be recognized as an expert in the field of playing.
So, let me ask you. Can I ask you some questions? Okay. So, Mr. Cimental, you're familiar with the property?
Yes, I've been there several times.
You've done an inspection of the property and you're familiar with the plans that are submitted to the zoning board?
I've been involved in many of these iterations.
And you're familiar with the relief being sought?
Correct.
I know I went over it, but can you go over that a little bit for the board's identification?
Yeah, it was actually a good segue from the chairman's and some of the other board members saw it on page five of 16. I kind of did the measurements of the property, kind of lay out, right, because the first thing we need to do is prove hardship, and that the hardship has to result from, you need characteristics of the subject land and structure. The odd, as the chairman and other board members pointed out, is, as an odd angle, if it was perfectly rectangular, and this was pushed out, you'd have the ability, right, for the greatest setback. What happened was, when this was originally proposed, it was only 2 and a half to 3 feet, and everybody agreed that it appeared that that was just not seeking the least relief necessary at 2, 2 and a half. By cutting that out, not only did we increase the setback there to try to seek the least relief necessary, but we were able to reduce the deck towards the building coverage, we cured that. The parking spaces, if you look at page four of 16, as I went around and got as many pictures as I could, even a picture with the vehicles, the stalls are actually into the public right of way, the back of the car was actually sticking into the public right of way because of the angling. Parking doesn't meet your requirements of 200 square feet per space as required for a bedroom, so we cured that. We've taken unsafe situation, you have four parking spaces which egress in a rare fashion back into the right of way. Just as a matter of coincidence, I didn't see this, there's a letter to be submitted from a neighbor, didn't approach her for this, and she says, "It's gonna make it safer because you gave rid of that driver," and all the scots are backing out. And it was such an interest because it was in my report. So, we're getting rid of this unsafe design condition, making a real appropriate parking situation. The only place you could put the garage clearly, because you gotta, you're gonna front it under the primary frontage, is here. We're trying to preserve and we were trying to limit the encroachment into the primary frontage to protect the curb appeal, minimize impact on softscape. We happen to have a corner lot, not a true secondary side yard as most homeowners do, so we tried to minimize the impact, but the good thing is we're intruding onto a public right of way, we're not intruding toward neighbor. That's why we kept the greatest setback on this side, pushed them more to that because we're trying to angle clearly the decking towards the view of the water, that's obvious. And we fielded all these different iterations and improvements, like I said, we've cured the parking, we're complying with the softscape, we've cured the FAR, we've got rid of an unsafe design, we've minimized the setback with the decking, we're close to the hardscape, you can play with those numbers, the board wants us, we're variables to compliance. And the porch does increase the front yard a little bit, but that was already a pre-existing condition, as you can see, the whole house is into the front yard setback. This lot itself is 22.9% deficient in lot area, so what that does is that impacts the building envelope by that much, and because of the angling, we're 17.23% deficient on the lot width. So, the building envelope overall is constrained by the lot area and by the angling of the properties. These are unique characteristics of the property. We're also dealing with a home that was positioned already into the front yard and more towards the intersection point, more than balanced to the back than I would have helped to, but this is a pre-existing condition too. And dealing with all this, I think we've done pretty well to balance the relief that's being pursued, and since the, since the planning board here, we've even done another iteration and cured even more, so that we could argue seeking the least relief necessary. So, oh, as usual, I did an analysis of surrounding neighborhood. I could have gone out several blocks and brought the most monstrous homes in, but I felt I would be skewing the numbers. I kept it to one block. We are absolutely in character, I've got photographs of just the immediate residences, and we're still gonna be very balanced with the home. Clearly, a lot less hardscape and a lot more, a lot increased softscape compared to the surrounding homes, and I think it's, I think it's an equitable proposal.
So, Mr. Cimental, we're seeking a dimensional variance here, variances?
Yes, so on page... Because I know the board has to give specific rather than general relief, on page 15 of 16, I actually laid out each variance, what the conditions are, the relief that we see from each variance. I even noted as a, just out of an abundance of caution, the pre-existing condition of the house, because usually you seek a variance from the closest point, but the residence here is in the front yard, I put that up in abundance of caution as well, albeit a pre-existing condition.
And let me just ask you for the standards. Is in your opinion that the hardship towards the applicant seeking relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area?
Yeah, I would say that the hardship actually results from both the unique characteristics of the land itself, you've got a substandard lot and an oddly contiguous lot, as well as the positioning of the residence, so I would say it was both in the structure angle there.
Is the hardship, in your opinion, a result of any prior action to the applicant?
No, no, these pre-deed ownership of the property owner, they have the heel of these conditions, they're trying to preserve the residence that worked around these existing changes.
Does the hardship result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain?
No, primarily to enjoy and have full reasonable usage of their property and residence.
Will the granting of the requested variances alter the general character of the surrounding area or appear the intent or purpose of the zoning law that sort of comprehensive plan?
I looked at many, many lots, and I put the highlights in my report, and I believe they're absolutely in character.
And here's a standard just for the benefit of the board that's going away in January.
Yeah, well, not the only one.
Is the requested relief the least relief necessary?
Yes, that was the whole reason why we were at these iterations, was to cure deficiency after deficiency and to try to cure what we could and still to realize, you know, full enjoyment and reasonable usage of the property.
And in your opinion, would the, or would the owners suffer more than a mere inconvenience if the requested relief were not granted?
Yeah, naturally, if the status quo condition were maintained, I think they're actually worse for the neighborhood because that, the public design is just improper.
Any questions for the board, Mr. Cimental? Any questions?
This might be more coming from the designer, what's the plan for under the outdoor shower and coming out the back of the house? What is the, is it grass right up, it's right up to the, like, where the outdoor shower is?
You know what, we can go to the slides, it'll show you, we can go to the slides, the back of the house, I think it's maybe slide number five? It'll show you a virtual.
The ones that you did?
Yes.
Okay, is that the one?
Oh, go down two more to slide 32. Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay, so there's some hardscape there as well, but otherwise, it's just right up to the
It's all grass.
It's all grass.
Yeah, everything's dead.
Okay. And the intent is just to have grass there, so we're not cleaning it.
So, Ms. Cornell?
Yes.
That hardscape is not shown on the site plan, therefore was not calculated.
So, we'll eliminate it. So, we'll eliminate it. It's not on the site plan. These are just graphics.
Okay, those are graphics, so they're not, it's not, so you didn't, so that wasn't included in the one percent.
It was not on the site plan, the site plan is what it stands, what carries.
Okay.
Could be previous papers.
Which is still hardscape.
That's the weird part of the hardscape requirement, it's still hardscape.
Mr. Cimental, the, actually, could you put up the other dimensions on the drawing there, Mike?
With the site plan?
Yeah, site.
You have to go back and forth.
That's why I'm doing this, because I don't wanna scroll back and forth, where were we down?
So, that's good, because we can see it all, you don't have to blow it up, Mike. So, the front yard frontage is 82.77 foot, and the rear is 71, so that, is the reason for many of these side setback variances, is the fact that there's like basically a 12-foot difference between these two lot lines?
Well, it definitely contributes to that particular variance. Overall, if this was a true 10,000 square foot lot
Squared.
Squared, or even rectangular. The resulting building envelope would give you all the area you need. That's the problem with substandard lots, right? You got to deal with setbacks that are still applicable to a 10,000 square foot lot, but this is a 7,700 square foot lot. I mean, once again, in January, that's gonna be another issue to deal with and address from now on, you're gonna get proportionate reductions in the pool lot, but, so this individual has to deal with the same setback requirement somebody who had a compliant lot, but on a much smaller building envelope.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, there's a letter that we received from the neighbors, Anthony and Sanya Di Pasquale, from 81 Candem Road, supporting the project. And I have several copies here which I will present to you as an exhibit for our hearing. Mike, you must be Garrett. Joe, you can mark one of these.
Sure.
You don't get many of these.
Favorable ones?
Shouldn't be said written, too.
So, Joe, I have a question. On hardscape?
Yes.
What's crushed stone?
Hardscape, which is crazy.
Anything that is not replanted material is hardscape?
Blue stone.
Yes, essentially.
Essentially, okay.
There are some exemptions to the hardscape which came through this second round of the bulk revisions, so they removed things like the HVAC pads and totaling, I think 200 square feet, yeah, they removed.
Set to cover.
Yes, set to covers. Did we remove the wet surface of the pools or was that already moved?
Anything to do with the utility, basically.
Yeah, essentially. Up to a certain amount, you can't have a, you know, a 24 by 24 utility pad.
Really?
I think you sold it in my helicopter.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone who was opposed that would like to speak? Chairman, entertain a motion of applause is publicated.
So, who would second?
A motion of demand properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Very none, all those are in favor?
Aye.
Approves that motion carries, please. What is the board's verdict against the Antonucci?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to project summary, Antonucci, Tax Assessor's Plaid N-S Lot 183 dated May 30th, 2023, I'd like to adopt the, I'm sorry, 75 Treasure Road, I'd like to adopt the following findings of fact. The applicant is submitting a request to construct an 18 by 25 lateral addition and a full second story, as well as a wraparound deck and a new porch. The project requires variances from the dimension regulations, section 6.4 and four area ratio matrix maximum hardscape, section 6.4B. I'd like to adopt the facts that were included in the project summary A through G. In addition, I'd like to incorporate the information submitted as part of the application and the testimony of the following individuals who spoke as representatives and experts to the applicant. John Garrett, he, attorney for the applicant, who indicated in his opening statement that prior to submitting the application to the planning board, several revisions to the initial design were done to address lot coverage, softscape, and following the planning board meeting, some additional revisions were made to the plan to address concerns with respect to the side yard setback issues. We also heard from Christopher Ducharme, who designed the house, and he explained the redesign, the initial design as well as the redesign, attempts to make the property obviously more usable for the applicants, but also safer. Specifically, he addressed the issue of existing parking which encroached into the street and side of the property on Burbank. We also heard from Edward Cimental, who's We also heard from Edward Pimentel, who was recognized as an expert in land planning and design. He provided some additional color with respect to how the, the property was designed and redesigned to address some, and reduce some of the, that was requested. There was also a letter introduced from the neighbors, Anthony and Sonia Di Pasquale, in support of the project. No individuals spoke during the public hearing in support of the request and no individuals spoke during the public hearing in opposition to the request. The planning board had recommended, the planning board found the application to be complete and in conformance with the land use component of the comprehensive plan with a vote of four to zero, and recommended the application to the zoning board of review for denial for the following reasons: that the project is not in compliance with the development of performance standards, that the site is not suitable for the proposed use, that there are available alternatives to the proposed project, that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is not due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant, that the granting of the requested variance will alter the general character of the surrounding area or appear the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance, or the comprehensive plan and the temporary answer upon which the zoning ordinance is based, and that the relief to be granted is not the least relief necessary. And lastly, that the hardship that will be suffered by the owner if the variance is not granted does not amount to more than the... The denial, the vote on that denial was four to zero. That completes my findings of fact.
I'll second.
A motion has been made promptly seconded to add to the findings of fact into the record. Is there any discussion?
What I neglected to mention is the actual relief request on the side, so I'd like to, findings of fact to include that. So the relief request is from section 6.4, dimensional regulations, a 6.71-foot front yard setback variance from a 2.32-foot right side yard setback variance and a 7.27-foot left side yard setback variance. And from section 6.4B, a floor area ratio matrix maximum hardscape variance of 115 square feet or 0.1.
Hold on, then, my second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there was math involved. The left side yard setback variance is actually a 6.16 feet.
6.06.
Yes. Thank you. I neglected to make that change.
The left side yard?
Yes.
6.16.
6.16.
Okay.
Makes it better.
Left side, gentlemen, that's right. So I would amend my findings of fact to reflect that the left side yard setback, setback variance requested is 6.16 feet.
I'll amend my second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, with respect to the project summary before us, antenici dated May 30th, 2023, I had some reservations with respect to this relief, specifically the left side yard setback variance of 6.16 feet, prior to the hearing, I must say, after reading the project summary. I think that the testimony that we heard today, specifically with respect to the angle of the lot on the right side and the revisions that were done to reduce the request to, to, on that side, to 3.8, is it 3.84?
Eight.
Yeah, 3.84 feet indicate that the, this is the least relief necessary. And for that reason, among others, based on the testimony that we heard tonight and the information that was presented, I would move to grant not only that relief, but the remaining relief requested in this application, subject to conditions one through, I'm sorry, My second, then.
Joe, that was you?
A motion has been made promptly seconded to grant the relief requested with conditions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, five to zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
Jill, do you have anything for us to say?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Real disappointment.
There's always Monday.
Yeah, don't worry. Yeah, you've got another hearing, just another week.
Oh, three days.
Three days.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. There are... Good luck with your project. We do, Jill, I haven't had a chance, I haven't had a Jill in progress.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman. So, move. All of you. Aye, opposed? Yeah. Thank you.